Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, April 6, 2022, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Donald Bergen.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Matthew Mitchell. Sam Levin.
Here.
Gabriel Metley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Paul Laird.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Okay, and we have one spot empty this morning, so Mr. Laird, would you come forward and take that position? Okay, correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The only announcement I have at this point is there are a number of terms on the commission that are expiring, among them is Mr. McGowan's. Those terms expire June 30th, so in lieu of appointing someone to replace Mr. McGowan until June 30th, we've decided we're going to go ahead and, June 30th, make new appointments for all the renewing members. So, a list of the renewing members whose terms expire on June 30th, Mr. McGowan was one of those, Chad Nelson, and Donald Bergen were the regular members whose terms are expiring in June. There are alternates that are expiring are Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Levin. Their terms also expire as alternates in June, on June 30th. If any of the, anyone on the board, currently a commissioner or an alternate would like to reapply or apply for a permanent, a regular, or an alternate position, please contact the city clerk's office and submit your application by June 3rd, and I'll make another announcement at our other meetings, too. So, June 3rd is the deadline to, if you want to apply for a regular member or an alternate member, if your terms are expiring.
Okay, and is it a fact that now you do not have to wait a year in between terms?
Yes, we're not required a year wait between terms.
So, if somebody wants to re-up, they just go ahead and apply to the city, and that's taken care of?
Yeah, so apply through the city. The process is a little different now, there's going to be an interview process before a panel, and then that panel will advise the city council, and of course, the city council will still appoint the members, regular and alternate members.
Okay, and who consists of the panel?
I believe it's a member of the planning commission, excuse me, the city council member, I think there's two city council members, and a mayor, and I think a couple staff members are on that panel.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, minutes of the last meeting, are there any corrections, additions, deletions by commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. A second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Nelson, a second by Mr. Diaz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes six to zero, or seven to zero, sorry.
Okay. All right, let me start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item, there will be time for the commission to ask questions of staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium to, and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than three minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss a subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring it to the, back to the table for a motion, city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually then, a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 223230. It is a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for Ocatillo Ridge condos at 2020 Swanson Avenue, tract 2268, block nine, lot 10, creating a seven-unit residential condominium subdivision in the residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street District. I believe Mr. Kearns is going to present this item today, Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is located on Swanson Avenue between Smoke Tree Avenue and Mariposa The properties to the west, south, and east are zoned RUMS and developed as multifamily uses and vacant lots. The properties to the north are zoned mixed-use Uptown McCulloch Main Street District and developed with commercial uses. The site is currently vacant, but building permits have been submitted and design review is underway. The proposed condominium plat will allow the units to be individually owned, and they will be part of an association along with the common portions of the development. The project includes seven residential units with attached garages. Parcel A is a shared area. And public utility easement. Parcel B is a common pool area. The project will have a property owners association to manage and maintain association improvements. Parcel A and B will be privately owned, and the water and wastewater within the subdivision will be installed and maintained by the association. I believe the applicant is present at this time to also answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Any at all? Okay, if the applicant's present, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Kearns did a good presentation, so I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Mr. Nelson?
I have a question. On, so the, the building facing Swanson, this is something, something that we've been discussing for a while. We don't have any elevations or anything like that to show what, what this district is, is really trying to do to, you know, communicate the relationship between the, the walking paths and the structures. So, it looks like it's just a blank side of a garage. Do we have any elevations at all?
I do have an elevation.
And I was also going to ask if there's any, I know, I know you got to go through the process with the city, but I think at this point, we haven't really redirected or met about design review, so we don't know what the landscaping and everything's like that's going to be.
Right, most of that's handled through, with staff through the design review process. They probably haven't given me an updated one of those. Luke, Luke is telling me I have old elevations. So, so, he says that they've added some detail on the side.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, this is going through design review right now. The property, the project does have, for those units that are Unit A and G shown on here, the closest to the street, those garages facing the street, they have a detail on them, like a little pop-out, like an archway pop-out, to help break up that expanse. And that's not something typically you would review as a commission for the preliminary plat, but just for your knowledge, the design review for this, they've added some relief on that face of that wall that faces Swanson Avenue.
So, what you're saying is they've added, basically, a pop-out in the form of an arch, just to kind of break up that wall?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And that's going to be acceptable to design review, staff's design review, based on new, the current conditions?
That's based on the current conditions, that's approvable, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions of the applicant? Anybody at all?
Just one question.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Commissioner. What is the partial B here in the corner? What is, what is the, is that a swimming pool?
Yes, yes, that's the, that's the swimming pool.
Okay, just wanted to double-check, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Johnson, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I will now open it up to the public, if there's anybody that wishes to speak or comment on this item, anybody at all? Now's the time, either pro or con. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action 22-3230, a preliminary subdivision plat for Ocatillo Ridge condos at 2020 Swanson Avenue, tract 2268, block nine, lot 10, creating a seven-unit residential condominium subdivision in the residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street District.
Okay, we are now at the table for discussion, further questions and/or a motion.
I have a question.
Ms. Ballard.
Because the way the plan is done, it looks like a single-car garage, and it doesn't appear there's any extra parking.
Is your, is your microphone on?
I'm sorry. According to the site plan, it looks like it's a single-car garage, and there's no extra parking indicated. My question is, is there going to be public parking allowed along Swanson?
So, the, by the current code, city code, in this district, they're only required to have one parking space, so the one-car garage is, suffices that current city code, and then they have two guest parking spaces that is currently extra on top of their one space requirement.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. But is there also parking allowed on Swanson?
No.
No parking allowed on Swanson, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Nelson?
I'm going to need staff's help and Kelly's help, so I don't get out of line here. But I'm trying to, this is kind of a hybrid situation where we're, we're trying to get more density, but they're already in the process of, of, they've already done so much work, so we don't want to stop what they're doing, obviously. However, where I need help is, you know, in my opinion, I think that the sides of those units need more than just a pop-out detail, they need something like a man door in the middle that looks like a front door, looks like it's actual a structure facing the street. And then, I don't, I don't know what you can do about that dumpster, but, I mean, this is going to be another one of those things where we're going to get blamed for, you know, dumpster facing Swanson right there. And, you know, so, how much leverage do we have to, to help push this property in this hybrid switch, situation where we're trying to beautify Swanson and, and also help the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and we can only review this per our existing current code. So, our current code doesn't require the face of those buildings to be dressed up at all. The developer has added some, a feature that will help break up that plane of that wall. If you're getting into when, and any new standards won't become the standards until the city council approves it, and then typically 30 days after city council approval. So, the things we've been talking about in this downtown district about higher densities and, and maybe some design standards, aren't applicable right now. They'll become applicable if and when the city council approves them, and then 30 days after that date. So, we, we're review this per today's standards. This subdivision plat is just out of subdivision plat, where during this subdivision review process, we're not necessarily looking at the design of the building, we're looking at the lot side, the creation of these lots, these units for sale. So, while you, I admire your thought here, trying to get ahead of things, I think we may be jumping a little too far in front of this. This is allowed to develop the way it is now, per our current codes, and that's something we can address down the road. I think you're on the record as saying you would like it to look better, you think it might look different or have an improved aesthetic, but right now, it's allowed to develop per the current code.
Okay, and then?
Much leeway there.
I appreciate your help there, Luke. What are the landscaping standards for, for this development?
Well, again, we're getting kind of outside the scope of subdivision preliminary plat review, but the landscaping standards are, you know, tree, number of trees and shrubs in the first 10 feet of the property, and then a minimum square footage overall of landscaping, and that was, would be reviewed during the design review for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We are at the table for a motion. Mr. Diaz? No? Mr., who's reaching? Mr. Laird?
There we go. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Laird, a second by Ms. Ballard, to approve land use action 22-2, excuse me, 3230, with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes. Okay, congratulations, and good luck. Next item on today's agenda is ID 223227. This is a request to amend the parking in common master plan for 3565 and 3569 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2217, block 16, lots nine and 10, to allow vehicular access for a restaurant drive-through use, drive-through use in the commercial Southgate District. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The subject property consists of actually two adjacent lots located on Maricopa Avenue between Outpost Drive and McCulloch Boulevard South. The property together measures about 100 feet by 250 feet deep. The zoning for the property is currently, it's commercial Southgate, and the abutting properties to the east and west are also commercial Southgate. The lots behind, along the alley are zoned residential, Southgate District, and are a mix of vacant and developed properties. The, the lots on either side abutting the property are existing properties that have been developed. Here's a typical block for this master parking in common plan. The request is to amend the approved parking in common plan to allow vehicular access for a restaurant drive-through. The proposed drive-through lane will disrupt the layout shown here for the master parking in common plan, so this amendment is required. One intent of this master parking plan is to control the number of driveways accessing these lots from along Maricopa Avenue. These lots are each about a 50 feet wide, so the parking in common plan calls out limited driveway locations with shared parking spaces and travel aisles to help reduce the traffic conflicts that multiple driveways would allow. If we allowed a driveway every 50 feet, that could be quite hairy for our traffic management. Here is the site plan that was submitted. The applicant's letter of intent proposes a restaurant and drive-through for the property. The site plan shows a restaurant building in the buildable area, so the rear 100 feet is the buildable area of the property. And it shows the restaurant and the, the drive-through lanes in the, in the buildable area of that property. It also shows an internal driveway connection to the parking in common area. I've, we've overlaid the proposed plan with an aerial, so if you can see here, we have the proposed restaurant here with the drive-through that wraps around, the existing structures on either side with their parking in common plan, developed per the parking in common plan, and the driveways to the south here, one next to these two lots, and the other one next to the, to the west, I guess, of these lots. So, the existing driveways would be utilized, and then the parking in common for the rest of this, these lots would be, would match the parking in common plan. The drive-through would wrap around, wrap around the building, and the pickup windows over on this side, so, and then there's emergency access to the alley in the rear. Full design for the compliance with the development code and any traffic analysis will be required prior to construction of this project. Staff received no objections to the requests from any of the review agencies. With that, concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available remotely, if you have questions of them also. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Anybody at all?
Great job on the overlay, that was helpful.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Nelson? No? Anybody else? Any questions? All right, is the applicant present? I hear he is present by Zoom, or?
Yep, I am here.
Would you like to make a presentation?
Honestly, I'm here for any questions we've worked with, with the city a few times in the past, to make sure that we utilize everything. So, I'm mostly here just for questions, if you have anything.
All right, can we have your name for the record, please?
Yep, Samir Slaywalla, for Architects and All-in Associates, 1211 West Canary Way, in Arizona, 85286.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Hearing none, let's go to the public hearing portion of the meeting, or of this item? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action 22-3227, an amendment to the parking in common master plan for 3565 and 3569 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2217, block 16, lots nine and 10, to allow vehicular access for a restaurant drive-through use in the commercial Southgate District with the following conditions. One, the project shall substantially match the site plan submitted with the application. Two, design review and traffic analysis as required to ensure compliance with all applicable city codes, including driveway locations, parking, and vehicle stacking requirements. Three, properties shall be combined prior to development. And four, if the property is not developed per this approval, it shall be developed to conform to the original master parking in common plan. Thank you.
All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Nelson, I see you reaching.
I will make a motion to approve ID 22-3227, with staff's recommendations.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson, a second by Mr. Bergen, to approve ID 22-3227, with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Anybody at all? Then let's call for the question. Okay, congratulations and good luck. The next?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry? Thank you. All right, the next item on today's agenda is ID 22-3228. This is a request for a planned development rezone, amending the approved development plan for 1975 Daytona Drive, tract 2313, block one, lot one, in the single-family residential planned development district for a school building and multipurpose facility. And I believe, Ms. Ballard, you're going to recuse yourself for this item. Mr. Levin, would you please come up and take her place? And then, Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This is an 8.18 acre property, it's located on Daytona Drive, east of Mulberry Avenue, near Green Tree Drive. It's home to three buildings right now, a church, an educational building, and a pavilion that's under construction. There's the zoning map. The abutting properties are all zoned single-family residential, that's R1, are developed with a mix of homes and a few vacant lots, they all back to the church property. In 2002, the property was zoned limited multiple family R3, and was rezoned to light agricultural planned development by an ordinance to allow the new church building and a total of three buildings on the site. The A1 zone allowed a height up to 40 feet. In 2016, the zoning code was updated, as part of that update, the A1 zoning district was eliminated, and the property was reclassified from A1 to R1 PD, because the surrounding properties were also R1. The allowances and conditions of the previous planned development rezones still apply, including a building height of up to 40 feet and a total of three buildings. Now, this, on February 8th of this year, the city council approved a planned development amendment to allow adding two additional buildings to the site. Here's the site plan that was approved as part of the city council action, the two existing, three existing buildings here, and then the two new buildings, which were two separate buildings, separated by a parking area. So, their, city council's approval was based on this site plan. The proposed plan, as you see here, is a little different, there, this, the church is proposing now to have one building instead of those two, and because these site plans were, well, staff felt they were enough different, that we thought it was amendment to the previously approved plan development, so it had to go back through this amendment process because of the major, what we call a major change to the number of buildings, a little bit to their location. So, the letter of intent for this, and the site plan submitted with this request, shows the existing church, existing education building, and then a pavilion that's under construction. It also shows the proposed 27,000 square foot structure that will be built in two phases. Phase one is for a school, and then phase two would be for a multipurpose facility and additional classrooms for the school. The building is in the southwest area of the property, and it's about 50 feet, at least 50 feet from the rear property lines of any of the residential properties next to it. The proposed building will not exceed 30 feet in height. Exterior building elevations for the building were not provided with this request. The parking calculations for the project overall indicate a total of 325 parking spaces are required, and then 398 are proposed, so it well exceeds the required parking spaces. Design review and building permit review will be required prior to development of the property, and then staff's recommendation includes the same conditions as the most recently approved through that PD amendment the city council previously approved. Staff is happy to answer any questions, the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Anybody at all? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? Tell us what's going on.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Rob Sampson, with Salvatore Associates. We don't really have a presentation today, because we've already gone through this once with you, as you remember previously, but what happened in this project is, we had a city, or a neighborhood meeting, where many of the neighbors showed up and expressed some concerns about the proximity of the building to the, to Daytona, and there was a few other elements that had came up as we were meeting, and one thing that we, we errantly did, something that we, we kind of went out of, what's the word, out of the process a little bit, and we tried to present this site plan when we went to the city council, which we realized was not the way it should have gone. So, it was recommended that we have approval to build phase one, which is essentially the same as what you see on, on the building, plan in front of you, but to do phase two, it was a different, different configuration, and that's what Luke has outlined to you already. So, all we're here for today is just to make sure the process is done proper, and make sure that the, you know, the city's process is on, that's what we're here for today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Sampson, appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, either in favor or against this project? Now's the time. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 22-3228. for Land Use Action 22-3228 for a planned development rezone, amending the previously approved development plan for 1975 Daytona Drive, Track 2313, Block 1, Lot 1, in the single-family residential planned development, R1 PD District, for a school building and multi-purpose facility with the following conditions. One, the development shall substantially match the site plan provided with the request. Two, the site is limited to those buildings shown on the site plan. Three, the new buildings shall be set back at least 50 feet from the property lines. Four, building height for any new structure shall not exceed 30 feet. Five, windows providing views of the abutting residential properties shall not be located on the northwest portion of the new buildings. And six, design review for compliance with the development code and the conditions of approval of this, of this approval shall be required for the project prior to building permit issuance. And just as a reminder, this item will go to the city council's May 10th meeting with your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions by commissioners of staff? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion?
Mr. Bergen?
I would move for approval of ID 223228.
With staff's recommendations?
With, 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 with the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bergen and a second by Mr. Nelson to approve ID 223229 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion?
One quick question.
Mr. Diaz?
To staff, the six bullet points you put here are, they haven't changed since the last time we discussed this situation. And nothing's been added, correct?
Nothing's been added. These are the same, the same conditions.
Just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, let's call for the question. Place your votes. That's okay, hang on. Oh, hang on.
We can do a verbal vote. Mr. Levin? We can do a verbal vote.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you and good luck. The next item on today's agenda is ID 223229. This is a request for a zone change for 40 Retail Center Boulevard, Retail Center 2, Parcel B, from General Commercial C2 to Manufactured Home RMH District. For this, would Ms. Ballard please resume her position? And thank you, Mr. Levin, for helping out. And Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you again. The subject property is about 18 acres and it's vacant and undeveloped. It's located west of Highway 95 on Retail Center Boulevard, just south of the shops at Lake Havasu. The abutting properties to the west, north, and south are also vacant. There's an electrical substation at the southwest corner, near the southwest corner of the property. The property to the east across Retail Center Boulevard is developed with a boat and RV sales use. There are also some vacant lots on that side. City water and, city water and wastewater are available at the property. The zoning map for the property, the subject property, and the properties to the north and south, and actually, and all around except for the west, are zone C2 commercial. The property to the west is in Mojave County. The city limits is the, the western property line of, of this subject property. And the county designation, zoning designation is also general commercial. Here's an area map. The resident, the applicant, excuse me, recently submitted a general plan amendment to reclassify the subject property to medium-density residential. That general plan designation was approved by the city council on February 22nd of this year. The medium-density residential land use category for the general plan is appropriate for a manufactured home zoning district. The applicant's letter of intent asked to amend the zoning from C2, general commercial, to RMH, manufactured home district, to facilitate, facilitate development of residential uses on the property. Specifically, they proposed to develop about 150 new lots, new home lots, with a mix of various sizes of manufactured homes that would be sold to an individual on leased land. After a rezone approval, the owner may submit applications to develop the property. During the development process, items like water, wastewater, traffic, right-of-way improvements, fire department access will be reviewed for compliance with city standards. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here and staff is also here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Hearing none, we'll ask if the applicant is here, would like to make a presentation. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Mac Hall with Iris Development Services. I'm here to answer any questions on this project for the applicant or developer.
Do we have any questions of the applicant, Mr. Nelson?
Mac, this is a, are you gonna, are you doing a PD on this?
Probably so, to be modify some of the requirements that are in the development code for the manufactured homes. We haven't gotten that far in the process, but there'll probably be a PD with some restrictions and landscape requirements for that.
Okay, my only concern is, is, you know, we've, we've seen the, the previous plans and have approved those. And if we make the change now, you know, and the property goes up for sale, it could just not be that plan. So I was hoping to see a PD on, along with this, but
Okay.
that's just my comments.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Now is the time to do so. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for Land Use Action Number 22-3229, a zone change for 40 Retail Center Boulevard, Retail Center 2, Parcel B, from C2 to RMH District. And as a reminder, this item will go to the city council at their May 10th meeting with your recommendation. Thank you.
All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, commissioners. Anybody?
I have a, a question for Luke.
Mr. Nelson?
Going from C2 to RMH with, without a PD, what are the lot sizes that are required for RMH?
Well, for an RMH lot, according to my handy dandy-
The handy dandy book.
Because some things I don't remember off the top of my-
Me neither.
So the RMH has a minimum lot size of 7,200 square feet and a minimum lot dimension of 60 by 120.
So I wanted to, can we bring the applicant back up here to address?
Mr. Hall, would you please come back?
If, if we pass this, are those lot sizes going to apply?
If we were looking at doing a subdivision, yes. But since it's leased land, it would be one big lot. But we are going to try, so that's the reason why for the leased land is to get those duplexes in and so forth.
Okay.
Yes, manufactured home park is allowed on, in the RMH. And a manufactured home park typically is one large property with spaces on it. And there may be space dimensions that would be laid out per the minimum standards, per the required standards of the development code for a manufactured home park. So if they're gonna, they're gonna rezone this to RMH, and it sounds like they want to do a manufactured home park, one big property, where they would lease out spaces, they would not create individual lots for each of these units. They would just lease the land under it as a space. And there are minimum requirements for spaces and the design for the manufactured home park. If they were looking for any, any exceptions to that manufactured home park, then they may need to come back and ask for a planned development rezone to include any amendments or any requirements that they, any other exceptions they may be looking for, for that manufactured home park. I believe their intent is just to make it meet the manufactured home park standards. So if, again, if it doesn't, then you may see it back for a planned development rezone for this property.
Thank you for the clarification. And is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Medley has a question.
I have one more question for you. Do you have a timeline for this project?
We're trying to move as quick as possible. Probably looking at, the grading plan is probably three quarters of the way complete. So we, we're submitting for an at-risk grading permit probably within two weeks. And then infrastructure planners will probably follow by two months after that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any further discussion? We are at the table-
I just wanted to get that on the record, so everybody knows that we either are or are not doing double work. So I appreciate the clarification from both Luke and the applicant.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion, further discussion and/or a motion, commissioners. Mr. Diaz?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 22-3229 with staff's recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Diaz, a second by Ms. Medley to approve Action Item Number 22-3229 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Congratulations and good luck. This portion of the meeting is the call to the public. If there's anybody that wishes to address the commission on any subject whatsoever, we may not respond, but you may come to the podium and, and speak. Anybody in the audience? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Chairman. The next regular scheduled meeting is April 20th in two weeks. We do have items, so we will meet on April 20th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. We are adjourned.